Seventeenth meeting of the Mayor and City Council Meeting in Regular Session on Monday, 7th, 2012 to order. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. The President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. Ms. Rao, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye, here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Mo?
We'll now have the invocation, oh, we don't have, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mayor Mo.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, if you had an opportunity to review the minutes from the sixteenth meeting on Monday, September 10th, I will entertain a motion.
I move with the adoption.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Lez, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Rao, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Since we have a court reporter here with us tonight, we'll kind of move things a little bit out of order, and we'll move to Agenda Item Nine. The second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1751, text amendment number 227, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Land Development Subdivision, Article One, Zoning, Division Seven, Signs and Advertising Structures, and Division 14, Design Guidelines for Historic District Commissions of the Laurel City Code, providing an effective date. Mr. Brock will present.
(Text Amendment Application Number 227). I don't need your microphone. Sorry, text amendment application number 227 was filed on August 27th, 2012 by the Mayor and City Council of Laurel to amend Chapter 20, Land Development Subdivision, Article One, Zoning, Division Seven, Signs and Advertising Structures, and Division 14, Design Guidelines for Historic District Commissions of the Laurel City Code, and providing an effective date. On August 27th, 2012, a request asking for comments was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning. No response was received. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying this application, and public hearing was advertised as required by law in the September 6th, 2012 edition of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated September 12th, 2012 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission, held on September 11th, 2012, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. By Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Wilford, and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council approve text amendment application number 227 as presented in the proposed ordinance. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. The title has been read into the record for the second reading, and I'll open the public hearing at 7:03. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Mr. McSweeney, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is James McSweeney, I live at 400 Main Street in Laurel, and my only comment with respect to text amendment 227 is that last week, at the Historic District Commission, one of the items mentioned with respect to that is that there is a proposed sentence to be deleted from the zoning, zoning Division Seven on signs that refers to, that there refers to the fact that there are additional sign provisions in the guidelines of the HTC, and I would propose that that language stay in there as a notice to the citizens of Laurel that when they go to apply for a sign, that they might, they may have to look elsewhere in addition to finding, reading the provisions in the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brock, any comment to that?
This was a change recommended by the city solicitor. His only concern was that having this language under the HTC, it appears that there, the HTC would have additional authority, that the sign size and so forth is regulated under the sign section of the Land Development Code. And this was, like I say, this was the city solicitor's language and recommended change.
Mayor?
The administration doesn't have any problem with the recommendation from Mr. McSweeney in the historical district, and it's so noted what Mr. Brock brought up with the attorney as well, so we understand it. I do think it makes good sense to make sure it's referenced in there, and it allows the public greater access.
Would it make any sense to make a footnote out of it as opposed to a line?
Nah, just drop it.
Drop it, okay.
Okay, thank you. So, council, entertain a motion.
Sorry, unless John had anything further on my.
Okay.
I guess the deleted sentence is not in here right now. Do you need to amend it, put it back in? From the mayor's comments.
Right.
He would really be, he'd a motion to amend it, put the deleted one back in, I believe the cabinet.
Okay, okay, so, the motion would be, if anyone chooses to make that motion, to amend what's before us to include the deleted sentence as recommended by the Historic District Commission.
Mr. Smalls, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 1751, text amendment 227, as amended by not deleting the line referring to the Historic District Guidelines.
Thank you, Councilman Lez, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rao, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mo?
Thank you. We'll now move back to the top of the agenda, and Agenda Item Six, Report of the Mayor and Council, and we'll start with Councilman Ricks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Pilate High School for the excellent job they did in the fall fundraiser that they had last Saturday, was a great time, and a lot of people that I haven't seen in like thirty and fifty years were there, so it was a real, real nice event. I also participated in the Butterbean Classic at McCullough Field this past week, where we were raising money for the Gibbons family and that, for the loss of their daughter. I'd like to recognize Mr. Gerhardt, who's here tonight on behalf of Pilate High School, who is studying, as part of his government class, what the city is all about. Like to recommend, not recommend, but like to bring everybody's attention, that the Cops on the Roof will be at Dunkin' Donuts, again, on the 29th, the weekend of the 29th, and that we will have at the Partnership Hall on the 27th, the Night of Emergency Preparedness, starting at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Councilman Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got a long agenda tonight, so let me just mention, did attend the Tux River Commission last week, it was a very good meeting, in that we had counsel from Department of Planning there, and we also had one of the division chiefs. It would appear they're going to take more interest in what the Tux River Commission does, and we will be changing the thrust of our efforts in advocating for the Tux River and the watershed. The second thing is, I had occasion to attend the Laurel Hospital Foundation meeting this afternoon. Mr. Spearman, the new CEO, the new chairman and COO, spent two hours with us. He is very excited about being at Laurel Hospital, and most importantly, his 90th day, I think, is coming up this week, and he says he isn't going back, he's staying a while. So, you're going to see some interesting things happening at the hospital, I'm sure Mr. Smalls, as chairman of the board, will be keeping us apprised of those. There is going to be retreat, the foundation members were invited to come to the retreat, and they're going to be looking at strategies and rebranding issues for the, for the hospital. One thing that was apparent from the meeting this afternoon, with the, now that the Conkey Road Interchange is approved, that piece of property becomes a very valuable piece of property, in that it's easily attainable from the, from 95. You don't have to go up 198 and come down Van Duzen and so on. So I think, I think people that were predicting the demise of Laurel Hospital years ago, I think that they will be pleasantly surprised over the next few years. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Councilwoman Nicholas?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. I'll be brief also. I had an opportunity to attend the first meeting of the Trap, Neuter, and Release Code Review Committee, a very energetic and committed group of residents who are working with the city to revise our current code regarding feral cats in our community. I also had the opportunity to attend the library, the Laurel Library Committee meeting, the committee is, is moving forward. We had presentations from two architectural firms for the redevelopment of the library, and it's, it's very exciting, that committee will meet here in City Hall tomorrow night. Also, I'd like to announce that the first meeting of the Environmental Affairs Committee will also take place here in City Hall tomorrow night, so anyone who's interested in attending that is certainly welcome. I'd like to announce that due to the city council's attendance at the Maryland Municipal League's Fall Conference, the work session scheduled for Wednesday, October 3rd, is moved to Wednesday, October 10th, at 6 o'clock PM. Also, due to the Columbus Day holiday on Monday, October 8th, the regular mayor and city council meeting is moved to Wednesday, October 10th, at 7 o'clock PM. That's my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things, had the opportunity to meet with President Spearman at the Laurel Regional Hospital, and you've heard Councilman Lez talk about the hospital, so I won't go into detail on that. Again, he's very energetic, and I think has big plans for the hospital, I look forward to working with him. The, I want to thank you for the code review and the TNR First Committee meeting, if there's others that want to get involved in that, please contact my office. As you heard, Councilman Ricks talk about the Butterbean salt alternate benefiting Laurel and Gidding's family. Want to commend all the volunteers that helped put that on, they had a great day and very good turnout, thank Mr. Lottsky and his staff, Park and Recs as well, for them helping out as well. Had the opportunity to attend the Laurel Lions Club, their 48th Annual Endless Summer Truck, Car Truck and Bike Show here at the municipal center, and again, we want to thank them for all they do for the community, and had the opportunity to make the president, for what I know about vehicles, was able to pick the mayor's award, and they handed that out as well, so I appreciate that. I did have the opportunity to attend St. Mary's School, their Student Body Assembly, when they were doing their student government officers, and had the opportunity to speak with them, and hopefully they, they learned a little something, and more importantly, they were able to vote for their officers the next day, and we look forward to them, working with them as well. The Fourth Annual City of Laurel Dog Show at McCullough Field was held at, from 12 to 4, and again, our Park and Recs Division want to thank them for their work, as well as the other volunteers that assisted, and I think they had about forty-eight, fifty dogs show, a lot of fun, it's a good family event, and we want to keep that going, I want to thank, again, Park and Recs Division for, for their work there. The couple announcements, October the 7th, which is Sunday, will be River Fest from 12 to 5. Got a lot of new events going on that day, we hope the public comes out and takes part in that as well. Also, during that nine o'clock hour, the First Generation College Bound will be doing their River Fest 5K run, and for those that don't want to run, you can do the two-mile walk. That's October the 7th, at 9:00 AM, it starts, and all that money, and the proceeds go to help kids for college, and Joe Fisher, who has done that, formed this First Generation College Bound for years, has done an excellent job, and hopefully everybody will come out and support that. The, as you heard, National Preparedness Event will be held Thursday, September the 27th, over at the Partnership Activities Center, starting at 6:30. Have a lot of things to provide to the general public and organization, a lot of organizations will be there, we encourage you to take part, come and listen and learn. I do want to announce, I've gotten a couple emails, Lars, Laurel Life and Referral Service, their food bank is empty, we want to encourage you, if you have the opportunity, to either make a monetary donation, or if you have, when you go to the grocery store, if you can pick up some extra non-perishable, and provide that to Lars, and if you need help in getting it delivered, call my office, and we'll make sure that we get that to Lars. But, great organization, but usually, they're not empty this time, and this early, so a lot of people need some help, and if you can spare the extra change of the non-perishable foods, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. As you heard, city offices are closed on October the 8th, for Columbus Day. Cops on the Roof will be at the Dunkin' Donuts, they're on the roof for thirty-one hours, we encourage you to go by. If you don't want to pick up donuts, get some coffee, most of us don't need the donuts, but they're good. They're on the roof for thirty-one hours, and all the proceeds go to the Special Olympics, and they do a great job providing a lot of support to the Special Olympics, and that starts on September the 29th, which is Saturday, right around, I think, one o'clock, and will go through until September the 30th. So, if you want to drop a few loose change in there, please feel free to stop by. Also, I have a couple proclamations, I'm going to go down to the front, Mr. President. Several proclamations, and the first one is, I'll read, whereas American system of public, public lands includes public parks, landscape forests, wildlife, refuge, historical trails, natural streams, and wetlands, and other landmarks throughout the nation, that individually and collectively represent irreplaceable natural, natural resources, and whereas public lands provide locally accessible nature, and, I'm sorry, natural and cultural resources for environmental learning, wildlife applications, and recreation, and whereas public lands promote civic ideas that include shared stewardship and recognition of public ownership, and whereas recreational opportunities offered by the public lands help families lead a more active lifestyle and reduce the childhood obesity, and whereas land conservation and efforts improve access to public lands by urban residents and work to break down the barriers that prevent Americans, Americans from actively utilizing their public lands. Now therefore, I, Craig Amo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim September the 29th, 2012, as public, as National Public Lands Day in the City of Laurel, and call upon all the citizens of Laurel to recognize and participate in this special observation. I think, Mike? Think I've got another one for you too, so, I'll present that, I'll do this one, and then you can. The next is, whereas families, kids and families are empowered with tools and information to take action on issues of health and fitness, and whereas Nickelonia is encouraging millions of kids around the globe to get up, get out, and go play, it'll be telling all of us that, by going completely off-air for this annual event, and whereas children who play do better in school and develop skills that are linked to learning and academic performance, and whereas safe playgrounds, play equipment, and parks provide perfect environment for children to play, exercise, and spend times outdoors, and now therefore, I, Craig Amo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October the 6th, as Worldwide Day of Play in the City of Laurel, and invite all of our citizens to celebrate Worldwide Day of Play by visiting their neighborhood park or playground to support efforts in building and maintaining play spaces and playgrounds in their communities and neighbors. I think, Mike? Let me introduce Mike Lottsky.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, I think parks and recreation is a pretty important part of life. This city, this administration puts a lot of effort into that. We have some of the best leadership from the administration, giving, giving us the funding to do the playgrounds, to upgrade the playgrounds. We have Riverfront Park, which is one of the gems of the area, the river going through, the forested area, the open space, the athletic fields, all those things are very important to making the Laurel citizens happy, and I think the administration does a good job of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Next is National Men's Make a Difference Day, and whereas National Men's Make a Difference Day for Academic Success began as an initiative in 2009 to get men involved in supporting academics, and whereas research has shown that a father's involvement in academic lives of their children will last long beyond their childhood, childhood, and helps children have a strong parental relationships developed, development, better social skills, have less behavioral problems, and better grades. Whereas research has confirmed that fathers want to have a role in their educational lives of their children, and when asked to be involved, they become involved, and they will stay involved. Whereas we need not only engaged parents, dedicated educators, but all fathers and significant male role models to participate in the lives of their children, not only on National Men's Make a Difference Day for academic success, but all year and every year. And whereas the City of Laurel recognizes the need for male, male role models to participate, to go to the children's school, observe the students' daily routine, get involved in interactive classroom instruction as permitted, and get excited about teaching and learning. Now therefore, I, Craig Amo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim National Men Make a Difference Day for academic success in the City of Laurel, and urge all male citizens to make a difference for themselves and their families. And Dr. Robinson? Make a presentation, Dr. Robinson, and he's going to talk a little bit about the program.
Thank you, thank you. Give me that. There, absolutely. I'll get this out of your way, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I created National Men Make a Difference Day several years ago, actually started here in Prince George's County. We called and urged fathers to come out and be engaged, and take an active role in their children's lives, and on that day, we had ten thousand fathers come out. From that day forth, we saw fathers take an active role, participating in the academic performance of their students. As Mayor Mo indicated, research has shown that when fathers are involved, students perform better, they have better social behaviors, they involve in less drugs and sexual activities. So we are encouraging fathers to continue to take an active role by observing classrooms, meeting with teachers, assisting with homework, escorting your children to the libraries, purchasing supplies, there are twenty-six multiple ways and more for fathers to be involved. Initiative started here in Prince George's County, I'm honored that you guys have made National Men Make a Difference Day, a day of recognition here in Laurel, Maryland. I'm a resident of Laurel, I've been a resident of Laurel for the past twenty-plus years, my children attend school in Laurel, and I, I see fathers on a daily basis, as I drop my children off at Scottstown, so I know we have engaged fathers in this county. Nationally, last year, we had over one hundred and twenty-five thousand fathers participate, and we're looking to see that number rise this year. I want to thank you for acknowledging the importance of fathers, importance of parents, and, and the role that print engaging plays in student success.
Thank you, Mayor. The last I have is, whereas nonprofit organizations help build and sustain healthy communities in, in our county, and enhance the quality of life in Prince George's, and for others throughout the country and the world, and whereas the thousands of nonprofit organizations based in Prince George's County contribute significantly to the viability of economic, by providing residents with jobs, goods, and services, and whereas the nonprofit sector works as a responsible partner with private enterprise and government to avert the most pressing social issues in our time, and whereas nonprofit sector acts as a responsible steward of charitable dollars to diverse range of missions and goals, and whereas nonprofit organizations often fulfill missions by advocating on behalf of those who cannot advocate, and whereas the nonprofit sector throughout the county has, has a proud history of service, innovation, and social change, and whereas the accomplishments of nonprofit sector deserve acknowledgement and celebration. Now therefore, I, Craig Amo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim Prince George's County Nonprofit Week, and do, do encourage all residents to contribute and recognize and support nonprofit organizations in their communities, we just talked about one, so, is Mrs. Gingles here? You're a board member of the Human Services Committee of Prince George's County, did I get that right?
Almost.
All right, story of my life.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, thank you for coming. Give me that, please say so.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for having here. I am also a Laurel resident, well, I was, I'm not in the city anymore, but it is such an honor to be here, to talk about the Human Services Coalition of Prince George's County, whose mission is to advance vibrant communities through excellent nonprofits. And it is so wonderful to hear us talk about Lars, and wanting to do things for them, and our hospital, and all the other organizations that we talked about, and that's what we are here to do, we're a membership organization. However, what we do is help these organizations connect, we help them, help them to advocate better for themselves, and also, when our main goal is to help strengthen them by advancing them through helping their boards develop and building their capacity that way. So I really appreciate and am honored to stand before you, and once again, thank you for celebrating our first nonprofit week in Prince George's County, and receiving our first proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move to Agenda Item Seven, a general public hearing. I have two people signed up to speak. We'll open the general public hearing at 7:27. The first person to speak is Latonya Howard. Ms. Howard, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor Mo and Mr. Brock.
I, I turned that off, I'm sorry.
Now why did you do that? We'll try again. I thank you, Mayor Mo, President Smalls, and members of the City Council for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Latonya Howard, and I am a new business owner right here in the City of Laurel, so I wanted to come in just to introduce myself and tell you a little bit about the business. The name of my business is Howard Corporate Center, we've been open about three and a half months now, we're right off of 197, next to the golf course, and we provide furnished offices, conference rooms, and other services at a fraction of the cost of traditional office space, and with much more flexible services. Our goal is to help small businesses and large businesses alike to grow and succeed, and our solutions satisfy the needs of a wide range of businesses. For example, for startups and home-based businesses, we help to provide a business identity, and we can provide an alternative to meeting clients. identity, and we can provide an alternative to meeting clients in a coffee shop or in your private residence, so it's about improving and creating a professional image. For larger businesses, on the other hand, we can provide overflow space or satellite offices for those that are looking to create a presence here in the Baltimore/Washington area. I think it's very interesting that you had the proclamation about nonprofits, and you gave a proclamation also to the gentleman here with the other nonprofit, because one of our core values is to give back to the community, and one of the ways that we want to do that is by supporting nonprofits, by giving them up to an hour of free office space per month. We're refining that program, and in the coming months, we're going to launch that, but it's near and dear to me to support nonprofits. In fact, earlier this year, I was named Volunteer of the Year by Hands-on Greater D.C. Cares, so I think it's very interesting how the universe aligned things today. But businesses and nonprofits are key, and also helping this country and this city to get back to a state of economic recovery. Obviously, small businesses are going to be a key component to that, and I'm proud to be part of that solution. I'm proud to support businesses and nonprofits in Laurel and throughout the Baltimore/Washington corridor. So I believe you all have packets with a little bit more information. For those that are interested, our website is www.howardcorporate.com, and thank you for the opportunity again to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. And welcome. Next, we have Mr. Glenn Spiegel. Mr. Spiegel, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Glenn Spiegel, Seven Dell Place, Laurel, Maryland. I had a nice surprise this evening when I came up here. A car was a length and six foot over the step-back line at 198, and he was still in the safe zone. He wasn't out in the middle of the road, he was still back behind the intersecting road at 197, 198, that Neil Peterson had put in, and I'd talked to him about it, about a crosswalk there or two, which is, I think, something we talked about February 15th of this year. The public safety and transportation, and I haven't received any word whether the minutes have ever been approved, or I wanted the minutes plus all the notes that were taken, and I haven't received anything yet, they keep canceling it and whatever. But whatever it is, there was an accident on the 10th there. I seen it when I come through, and my wife seen, not at that intersection, but back at where the market is, the Amish market. There was an accident there, and my wife witnessed one about two months earlier there. That's two accidents this year at that intersection, and I'd like to see advanced stop lines there too, but they have to be approved through the state, and I have a letter here that Mr. Smalls and Mr. Moe and Mrs. Jan Robinson said at the meeting back in 2004, and it stated that Mr. Weeb said that State Highway Administration won't do mid-block crossings, but they did one on 16th and Silver Spring and Rumble Strips. State Highway said they do not do, did do mid-block, however, they do not advocate them. Administration can consider crossings, but community has to buy into them. The group can send requests for consideration. Now this is what Mr. Weeb said at that meeting, and I think your brother was a co-sponsor of the meeting, and Mr. Rosen P., yeah, Delegate Brian Moe, and there's a whole mess of them. You attended the meeting, I was there, I came in late that evening, but this is what was said. Now, I don't know how we go about getting this thing done, but I would like to see advanced stop lines at some of these intersections. Now this, tonight when I came in, I say there was one already over the line by a car length and six foot, and he was, like I said, still in the safe zone. So I think they're worth looking at, but I don't know how you get them passed through the state or through this transportation and public safety in Laurel here. I don't know what I have to do, I've been on this since 1999, and I've still haven't got the crosswalk that I asked for. Neil Peterson seemed a little surprised, but I had talked to the State Highway, and I talked to you people about it before the accident that did happen that took a life. And I'm disappointed in that, but that's the way things are. And I hope that we can get this thing, I think there's a meeting scheduled for the 18th of this coming month, but I'm not sure if it'll be canceled or not. I know I've come up here several times, and it's always canceled on the board, so I can't say much if there's nobody to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. I have no one else signed up to speak during the general public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:35. Agenda item number eight is consideration of a recommendation for the purchase of uniforms for the police department. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilmembers, Mayor Moe. Before you should have a memorandum or reference not to exceed amount for purchase of departmental uniforms. With the hiring of new recruits to replace officers who are either leaving, retiring, or being promoted, has come to our attention that our uniform purchases will be exceeding the required $20,000 limit per vendor. The Laurel Police Department line item was prepared, submitted, and approved by the mayor and city council for fiscal year 13 to facilitate the purchases of departmentally-issued uniforms in the amount of $54,749. During the beginning of the fiscal year 2013 budget year, quotes were received from three vendors. The vendors were F and F, F and F and A Jacobs, I'm sorry, of Baltimore, Hyatt Company of Fulton, and Howard Uniform of Baltimore. As a result, F and A Jacobs was the lowest and best vendor to utilize since they offer brands and styles currently used by the department, such as Fenheimer and Albecco, which are the other vendors were not unable to provide. Therefore, we are requesting and seeking the approval to purchase uniforms from F and A Jacobs not to exceed the amount of $40,000.
Thank you, Chief McLaughlin. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. President, I move that we grant the request the chief was coming forward with, and that we purchase uniforms from F and A Jacobs not to exceed $40,000.
We have a motion from Councilman Ricks, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item 10 is the second public hearing on ordinance number 1752, R.O. 1, 2012, an ordinance to approve the conceptual revitalization overlay application for the town center at Laurel. I've read the title onto the record for the second reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:37. I have Mr. Robert DiPietro signed up to speak.
Robert J. DiPietro, 502 Gorman Avenue, Laurel, Maryland, RJD Consultants, on behalf of the ownerships of what used to be called the Laurel Mall, which is AEW Samara Capital and Greenberg Gibbons Company of Owings Mills. Mr. President, in the record, I would like to reflect tonight that we appeared before the Planning Commission on September 11th of 2012, and we received a unanimous recommendation of approval to the mayor and the city council for the concept plan, this is only the concept planned, we will be in shortly thereafter, and would note that the fact that the bus system seems to be quite a lot of discussion at the council and also at the Planning Commission, it was recommended the applicant must work with the Central Maryland Regional Transportation Corporation on a design agreement for a bus hub similar to the one which now exists on the property of the area to be identified, may possibly be an adjacent property or right-of-way subject to the approval of the Department of Public Works or other property owners, obviously, if it's off-site. And we accept that amendment as recommended by the Planning Commission. We will be back here for final, I believe, on October 10th, meeting for the final public hearing, and we will make yet another major presentation of the mayor and the city council. Ms. Potember is here tonight, she's the senior vice president for development for Greenberg Gibbons, would be happy to answer any questions that you may have of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. DiPietro. I have no one else signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, the third public hearing will be held on Wednesday, October 10th, 2012, at 7 o'clock PM. Agenda item 11, second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1753, an ordinance to create a new Article IV entitled Dumpsters, Specialized Trash, and Garbage Receptacles in Chapter 7 entitled Garbage, Trash, Weeds, etc. of the Laurel Code, in order to provide that all dumpsters and specialized trash and garbage receptacles must be within a wholly enclosed structure and allowing a period of time for compliance for existing dumpsters and/or specialized trash and garbage receptacles. I read the title onto the record for the second reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:40. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:40 and entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Lez?
I move for adoption of ordinance number 1753 as read into the record.
Thank you, Councilman Lez, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda item 12 is the second public hearing with possible action on Resolution Number 7-12, a resolution of the Marion City Council of Laurel approving an amendment to Resolution Number 14-11 to enlarge the designation area described as a suitable community, rather, a sustainable community by the State of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. I read the title onto the record for the second reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:41. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:42. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. President, I move for the adoption Resolution Number 7-12.
We have motions, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda item 13, second public hearing with possible action on Charter Resolution Number 158, a resolution to add a new Section 357 to the charter of the city of Laurel entitled Collective Bargaining, to provide for collective bargaining with certain police officers in the city police department. I've read the title onto the record for the second reading, we'll open the public hearing at 7:43. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:43. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Ricks?
I move for the adoption of Charter Resolution Number 158 with a comment, and the comment is that the more we get into this particular action, the more I'm learning about the subject, and I find it very intriguing, and I see that it provides a lot of security for our police officers, and I look forward to working with them and the council to see this to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you call the roll?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe?
I'm going to concur, and just, this is the first step of many, allows us to move forward with discussion, public hearings, and others as we move forward, so this had to be placed into the charter before we could even start discussing it, and I'll concur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item 14, second public hearing with possible action on Charter Resolution Number 159, a resolution to amend the city of Laurel charter to revise the ward boundaries of the city in order to provide for a substantially equal population in each of the city's two wards. I read the title onto the record for the second reading, I'll open the public hearing at 7:44. I have no one signed up to speak, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:44 and entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Councilman Lez?
Move for the adoption of Charter Resolution Number 159 as read into the record.
Thank you, Councilman Lez, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ricks, you seconded it, I'm sorry, Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks, Ms. Nicholas? I'm sorry.
We're all of them.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Okay, President Smalls?
Yes.
Mayor Moe?
Let me again thank the ad hoc committee on the census and ward boundary, did the review of this, it was Citizens Committee as well as Mr. Brock and the work that they did, and thought the report was well-done and a lot of input, and what we need to do now is continue to educate the public on where these shifts are going to occur, and we'll work hard on doing that. As I said to the council at the work session, we may end up having to come back to you all with some amendments, because we think the better way to do this may be by mail and others, unless you all want to get out there and deliver it yourself, but we need to educate, and that's what we're going to continue to do now that this passes. So I concur, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is this a 45-day wait too, or not?
Forty-five.
I just, Mr. President, I do want to, like the last resolution, this Charter Resolution, this is a 45-day where people can take it to referendum. I don't, you know, we're going to wait a little ways to see, but we need to start educating, so I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, this Charter Resolution, as well as the last on collective bargaining, can go to referendum if people wish to, but the sooner we start putting the word out on this, I think the better it'll make people at the next election. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And the last agenda item is the introduction of first public hearing on ordinance number 1754, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. I've read the title onto the record for the first reading, Ms. Saylor?
Thank you, President Smalls. This is the sixth amendment to the FY12 budget. It does not change the total of $28,169,961, as I had explained in a cover memo to the council, that once the auditors had come in, they were here for a week, the week of Labor Day, to do their fieldwork, and had reconsidered charging the issuance costs of the city's participation in the local government infrastructure financing program. We were able to pay that in cash. They would rather have it come from Department 655, which is the debt service interest department, so we're moving $55,000, excuse me, from the debt service principal department to the interest department, budget department. And then, again, in ordinance 1746, I did not transfer. And then, again, in Ordinance 1746, I did not transfer quite enough funds to cover the adjustment to the injured workers, workers' compensation account for the adjustment made through that audit. And that is transfer of $4,300 from the property insurance budget to the employee insurance budget. So again, the net effect is zero overall, and these are just some adjustment items that we needed to take care of in conjunction with the audit.
Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Council, I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules to advance this agenda item tonight.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Thank you, Councilman Lez. Ms. Ralph, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
Yes. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Ralph, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mo.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, I would just like to take a moment of council president privilege, which I don't get a chance to do very often, to wish my grandson CJ a happy birthday. Today, he hit the big 1-0. So, and he's watching. So if I didn't do this tonight, I couldn't go home. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.